Opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Cameron?
Let us pray. Father, we just thank you for this day and thank you, Lord, for all that you do for us. And I just pray, God, for your wisdom and guidance and direction. Let's pray for this nation, God, as we see things going on around the world that create concern. I just pray for guidance and wisdom for our leaders at our national level, state, local. Just be with us tonight, God, in all we do and all we say, that may bring glory and honor to you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Chris, are we on? Are we going? All right. Excellent. So I'm going to start out by saying that I apologize for missing last week's meeting. I discovered that I have fully transplanted from growing up to Mount Vernon, from Mount Vernon, to now living in Republic because my boy won the championship against Mount Vernon, forty-four to twelve. Alex had fourteen points. He played really well, and I'm sorry I had to miss the game or miss the meeting, but I'm really glad I got to go to the game. So I'm here tonight, and we're going to get started. We're going to open it up with citizen participation for items not on the agenda. If you're here for the trail, remember, we're going to have a separate meeting later. But if you want to talk about something that is not on the agenda, I'm going to open it up for citizen participation. Seeing no one, I made a closed citizen participation. Move on to the consent agenda. I need, and please note that items number one and two are being covered by the consent agenda. If there's anybody wishing to speak to that or ask questions, feel free to do so. Seeing none, I need a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Moving on to boards, commissions, and committee schedules. Please note that our city council meeting of March first, twenty twenty-two, is canceled because we're having this meeting here tonight. We have a board of adjustments meeting on March third, twenty twenty-two, a planning and zoning meeting on March seventh, twenty twenty-two, and finally, our next city council meeting is March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Moving on to old business and tabled items. Item number three on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill twenty-two dash oh five by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstention.
Motion carries six to zero to one. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately fifteen point zero nine acres located at the sixty-eight hundred block of South Farm Road eighty-nine from agricultural AG to high-density single-family residential R one H.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, I was not here last week, like I just mentioned, but I do understand that we had some commenters on this subject, and I believe, Mr. Cameron?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Mr. Saunders spoke at the last meeting regarding the ordinance that is before you right now, and I gave the directive or even the clarification that he was going to be allowed to speak at the second reading, which is not our normal protocol, which I was later reminded, I guess, as of today. But as I made it clear to Mr. Saunders that he would have the opportunity to speak at the second read, that that would be allowed tonight, considering the fact that I made him the word, and he showed up tonight in anticipation of having that opportunity. I would like for this council to allow him that opportunity to speak under our normal terms and time limits.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Brian D. Saunders, seventeen hundred Terror Valley Drive.
You beat me to it. That was what I was about ready to ask. Now, sir, you have three minutes to speak.
Since David disinformed me that I was going to speak actually against, against, and actually for, I'm limited to the one. I'm taking my nine minutes of comments reducing into three, so I'm going to speak fast.
Go for it.
Have the ability, so I'm not as organized as I plan to be. I apologize in advance and let you know in advance, I have several from the last meeting night, spoken from what you said, David, I think there were several people from our neighborhood who also planned to speak as well, so I'll let you take care of that, but they're here, whether they're for or against, I don't know, but they're here to represent these specific plans. Again, thank you for this opportunity, and again, the documents viewed from the website have been very clear, very friendly, accessible, and easy to find. Also, I want to thank Andrew Nelson, who somewhere I had a meeting with Anthony Sittin and got the invitation from the last meeting. I had an over two-hour meeting with him on Friday. It was very informative. He was professional and gracious and asked many questions. Looking at each of the documents and your comprehensive plan, I found much to answer my questions. I was very pleased, but also I found some disappointments. One, findings on your fact sheets, I believe that's from the planning and zoning meeting. Several commissioners comments about, A, conforming to the land use plan, transportation plan, waterstorm water able to be served by municipal infrastructure. One that did not stand out was not aggressively discussed or noted well documented as that is compatible with surrounding land uses. One comment from money commissioners, and normally I don't mention names, but since it's public documents, I think I will this time. Brian, it was hard to read, is writing Dubrava, I believe, generally liked type zoning with R one dash H directly north. Never was there a mention or any meeting comment regarding the good neighbors to the south, Terror Creek Zoned RR, in any of the comments after the discussion, even though it was commented at the planning and zoning virtual meeting and at last week's city meeting, there was never any documentation on that other than I mentioned later. Two, consistent with the comprehensive plan, and I've said I was going to read it, but I can't because I don't have time, but words that stuck out from my review of your comprehensive plan on this item and subsequent similar items, read, and adjectives and adverbs, read variety, styles, well-connected, improves, aligning, mitigate impacts to adjacent or established properties, support densification that is harmonious with surrounding development. That's your documents, but what I hear at the planning and zoning meeting, the city council meeting, and Andrew disagreed with me on this, but I'll repeat it, is that I see it as minimal processing and boilerplate. It seems like it's very rubber stamped, and as Mrs. White, since it's now documented, I'll say her name, was frustrated at the virtual meeting for the planning and zoning because it wasn't taking into consideration her property adjacent to it. And I'll jump to the chase here. My comment is, I'm not, as I said last time, I'm not against development. I'm a construction manager for Springfield Public Schools. Development's good. We listen to the neighbors' comments. We listen very carefully. We use that. I would ask that your model, one of your models is the new sign that was out on the highway coming in Republic from Springfield is growing together. Let's continue to grow together with quality and not make mistakes, as I've seen writings in development of cities in the past, like Detroit and Los Angeles and other areas around where they have made some good decisions, but they recognize twenty, thirty, fifty years later, you've made some poor decisions. Not against development of these areas here. You quickly went, as we pointed out last week's meeting, from agricultural zoned in the county to annexation and now to high density in less than sixty days. All I ask is a consideration of good quality, and I throw out with Mr. Nelson, why can't we have either a low median or high density with buffering between the development of the houses? Buffering with landscaping, hills, grass, trees between, so you have a nice quality that's adjacent to other high density, high density with buffering between that and what is rural residential and not immediate boom, 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 house, 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 backyards, fence to my neighbor Mrs. White, the road, and then her house. Why can't we have some separation of buffering? You have the authority. It is currently zoned agricultural. You do not, as a city council, have to make a decision to change that. I would ask if you'll listen to input from the neighbors. You invite that. You ask of that. I'm providing that. Please consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders. We appreciate your comments. Now, Mr. Cameron, did we make a decision about?
Mrs., there was one that was at the meeting last time that did not speak that I believe it'd be appropriate for.
Mrs. Greer, is that correct?
Yes.
Excellent.
Thank you for the opportunity to make comments.
Would you?
My name is Suzie Greer. I live at twenty-five ninety-five Terror Valley Drive.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I wasn't the last meeting. I concur with Mr. Saunders completely. I'm not totally opposed to this development, but something Andrew said last week, and it's not a direct quote, but he did say that just because it was high density did not necessarily mean that had to mean house after house after house. He said it could mean more green space, and that is my feeling about this, is why can't we have, as Mr. Saunders said, buffers between us and a good transition between a housing development and a rural setting? And then I also would like to have some comments about the traffic study that was done because some of these people will obviously be taking County Line Road over to ZZ, and County Line Road is a two-lane, narrow road. When you get to ZZ, and if you're turning north to go to Springfield, that is not a good intersection, and when you get a lot of traffic and people are trying to turn on to ZZ, that's going to be a probable accident area. Then, if they don't go to ZZ to make the turn, if they turn off on one oh one, one oh one is a bad road. It's full hot holds. It's narrow. It's hilly. It won't be good in bad weather. And then also, if they end up taking Terror Valley over to ZZ, which they could, our road is no centerline mark. It's a rural area. Children are riding their bicycles. We have no sidewalks. We have no shoulder, and so I'm asking this because we're going to introduce a lot more traffic. We're already introducing more traffic because we've got Shula Ridge expanding. We've also got valley trails, and then there's also the Old Savannah. So here, we're adding even more in to the traffic pattern, and I would just ask that that be considered when we're talking about how many people are going to be introduced into yet another location out there in that area.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time tonight. All right, so we're going to cut off citizen comment at this point on this topic for the council.
Are you going to allow anyone to speak in favor as the developer's representative?
He did speak, so I told him they could speak at the second meeting, so we have to honor that, both four important.
Then, yes, sir.
I can agree.
Please state your name and your address.
Yeah, my name is Chris Way. I'm a civil engineer with CJW Transportation Assaultants in Springfield located at fifty-fifty-one South National Avenue. You know, I want to touch on a few things that citizens have brought up. I'll start with the traffic study. We did do a traffic study on this property as we have done with phase one, two, and three. We did the traffic study for phase four. Phase four concluded with a hundred and one lots that we have proposed, but there'll be sixty-seven new trips into the development during the peak hour and thirty-seven trips out of the development during the peak hour for a total of a hundred new trips generated by this development during the peak hour, which is four P M. to six P M. when everybody's returning home from work. We looked at all of the adjacent intersections to this development, and all of them operate at a level service of A, which is the highest level of services you can have, so we don't see any detriment to the surrounding intersections. The lady who just spoke mentioned one ninety-four and ZZ. You know, yes, traffic from this development will use that intersection, but that intersection is probably at least a mile away from this location, and it's not the developer's duty to fix MODOT and county roads that far away from the development. There's another development going in on one ninety-four in the county, you know, so you can't pin this developer for that construction cost to approve something that's been historically a terrible decision that would take a large sum of money and, you know, cutting back that hill on ZZ to ever make a difference. As far as the density of this development, yes, we are asking for RS, or high-density residential, but in phases one and two, the average lot size came out to eight thousand nine hundred and sixty square feet, which is approximately forty square feet less than medium residential. A lot of this is because cul-de-sac lots are bigger, corner lots are bigger, so overall, our density was just under medium residential. I did look at this, assuming that what we've done in phases one, two, and three, approximately thirty percent of the land was used as right-of-way and detention and common space, and I believe it was Ms. Mitchell that asked, you know, hey, how many lots could you do if you did medium residential? So I took seventy percent of that as buildable lot space, and I came up with ninety-nine lots if we were to build the minimum in medium residential. Right now, we're only proposing a hundred and one lots, so there's really not a difference between what we're proposing and the medium residential. If we did go with something like low density, we could probably get somewhere around eighty-ish lots, maybe a few more, so we'd have less right-of-way and infrastructure. Ultimately, our plan has been very clear. They said it only took sixty days to get annexed in and to get to this point, but we did go through the process. We've been very open and clear with you guys that our intentions are to make this similar to phase one, two, and three, and to have high-density residential, so I do please ask that you guys take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, that's a little bit unusual. We don't usually do speaking at second reads, but we also wanted to honor what we said last week, so that's why we kind of shifted the rules a little bit there. What we always do is ask if there are updates from the city and... There you are. Hi. Any updates from the city?
No.
Excellent. All right, seeing that there's no updates from the city, is there any discussion or comments from council?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question just out of my own curiosity? What happens when land is sold agriculture? Is it a private owner? And then do they sell it to a developer, and then that's when the city has to decide what it goes to add to residential?
I think I know what you're trying to ask.
Yeah, do you get that? I'm just curious for my own sake, like, and just how are the, like, the neighbors educated in that when land goes up for sale?
Mr. Cameron, do you want to try?
Well, I mean, I'll try. I can't speak for the neighbors knowing, like, if they post this property for sale. We, the city, don't serve as a broker or even have a knowledge necessarily of what property is being sold as private property, so we cannot really govern over what someone does with their land, but when they approach it, so if you go to do an annexation, that is a publicly posted property, so there is a public hearing from, and historically, most people have their property as ag before they have it rezoned to residential. Sometimes it's contingent upon the sale of getting approval to rezone the property. So, hey, I'll buy the property from you, contingent upon it making it through a rezoning process. I can't speak to whether that was the transaction because that's not a part of our overall governance, but what happens is it's normally brought in as ag because it cannot be zoned necessarily, I guess it could be zoned residential, but in the, or in the county, but normally as land came in, in the master or the comprehensive planning for even the county, it comes in as ag, so once they establish it, most of those properties come in as ag. They start that way. So it was in the county. They came to the city in an annexation in a public hearing process. They notify the surrounding areas, but they also have to post a sign on the property that this is taking place. So we hear that. That is the way that the public, when they're driving by the adjacent property, opportunity is there, it's there posted on the site. Then it comes here for public hearing, where we do that five minutes if you're here to speak in favor, for those that are here to speak against. Other than that, there's no other further notification that we, the city, are required by statute to provide.
Yeah, that is my statute. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion from council? All right, seeing none, and as this is a second read, I need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill twenty-two dash oh five.
Motion. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. We are now going to take a voice roll call vote.
Councilmember Grooms.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Dykman.
Aye.
Councilmember Gerke.
Stain.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Councilmember Updike.
Aye.
Ordinance passes six to zero to one. Moving on to item number four on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill twenty-two dash oh six by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Stain.
Motion carries six to zero to one. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately seven point eight six acres located at the eight thousand block of West Farm Road one ninety-four from the Lakes at Shula Ridge Plan Development District, PDD, to high-density single-family residential R one H.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Haynes, any updates from council or from staff?
No.
Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill twenty-two dash oh six.
Motion. Second.
Laura, you good?
Yes.
We will now do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Updike.
Aye.
Councilmember Gerke.
Stain.
Councilmember Dykman.
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Councilmember Grooms.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Ordinance carries six to zero to one. Moving on to item number five on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill twenty-two dash oh seven by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately sixty-two point nine zero acres located at twenty-five sixty-one South State Highway MM from Eclipse Events Center Plan Development District, PDD, to Hankins Farm Plan Development District, PDD.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from city?
No.
Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, we now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill twenty-two dash oh seven.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Councilmember Updike.
Aye.
Councilmember Dykman.
Aye.
Councilmember Grooms.
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Councilmember Gerke.
Aye.
Ordinance carries seven to zero. Moving on to item number six on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill twenty-two dash oh eight by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately ten point two zero acres located at seventy-two ninety-four West Farm Road one forty-four from agricultural AG to heavy industrial M two.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from city?
No.
Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill twenty-two dash oh eight.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in... Oh, roll call vote.
Councilmember Gerke.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Councilmember Dykman.
Aye.
Councilmember Grooms.
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Councilmember Updike.
Aye.
Ordinance carries seven to zero. Moving on to item number seven on our agenda, this is twenty-two dash oh nine. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill twenty-two dash oh nine by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately forty acres located at thirty-four forty-five East Hind Street from medium-density single-family residential R one M to high-density single-family residential R one H.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from city?
No.
Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill twenty-two dash oh nine.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Grooms.
Aye.
Councilmember Dykman.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Councilmember Updike.
Aye.
Councilmember Gerke.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Ordinance carries seven to zero. Moving on to item number eight on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill twenty-two dash ten by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Stain.
Motion carries six to zero to one. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council vacating a three hundred and eighty-five-foot portion of North Brooklyn Avenue located east of State Highway MM, excuse me.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from city?
No.
Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill twenty-two dash ten.
Motion. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Gerke.
Stain.
Councilmember Updike.
Aye.
Councilmember Dykman.
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Councilmember Grooms.
Aye.
Ordinance carries six to zero to one. Moving on to item number nine on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill twenty-two dash eleven by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Stain.
Motion carries six to zero to one. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately twenty-nine point three nine acres located at the twenty-five hundred block of South State Highway MM from general commercial C two and agricultural AG to Iron Grain District Plan Development District, PDD.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from city?
No.
Any questions or comments or discussion from council? Seeing none, I need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill twenty-two dash eleven.
Motion. Second.
We will now take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Updike.
Aye.
Councilmember Gerke.
Stain.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Dykman.
Aye.
Councilmember Grooms.
Aye.
Ordinance carries six to zero to one. There is no new business on tonight's agenda, but we do have resolutions under other business. This is item number ten on our agenda, twenty-two dash R dash eleven, a resolution of the city council to approve Bartlet and West as engineering officials for the City of Republic Quiet Zone Study. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-two dash R dash eleven.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Brickner.
Good evening. The city requested qualifications for general engineering services last year. Of that list, three were selected and scored off of it to participate in this quiet zone study. Bartlet and West was chosen because of their prior experience with quiet zone implementation. So what this will do is identify improvements necessary at the five intersections we're looking at, or the five railroad crossings in town, to implement quiet zones, which means the horns would not be required to blow their horns as they go through those. The five intersections we are targeting are Heinz, Hampton, Main Street, West Avenue, and O'Neal. There's an estimated forty to fifty trains that go through each day, and they're required to blow their horns four times per crossing. So that's a hundred and sixty to two hundred horn blows a day, just in that area. What this resolution would do would allow us to move forward with an agreement with a not-to-exceed amount of fifty thousand dollars. The very early construction estimate for the improvements that would be required is around three hundred thousand dollars. That's not for approval tonight. That'll come later once we do the study. Staff is recommending approval of the resolution to move forward with the quiet zone implementation. If you all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Mr. Grooms.
Has this study been conducted before?
Not here, but Bartlet and West has done it.
So we've never looked into quiet zones at all?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, we have. So there was a study that was done. We evaluated what it would take to conduct the study with the railroad. So we actually, during that time, Mr. Mike Landis was with us. He had reached out to the railroad, and they had outlined what was required and what we would have to put into place, which would require an engineering study and engineering improvements at each intersection. So you'd have to have grade separation or separation at each intersection. So you can't just have what it requires. You just have to pour like a concrete median a certain distance on each side. So one of the things that was brought up during the discussion and when it was brought to council was the city did not have the cash position on the street side until the ballot measure was considered before the citizens. So this was brought back up. Would we consider the quiet zone again now that the ballot measure for public safety was addressed to at least evaluate it? Because there was never a decision made whether to pursue investing somewhere around, it could be from three hundred to a million dollars to actually address it. And even if we do invest the money, there's no guarantee that they still will not blow that horn.
And was there any discussion about closing, crossing closures?
There was. And that was, so there was public hearings. That was, what was the, CDW? I can't remember the engineering firm, but CMT. So they partnered with MODOT. So MODOT commissioned a study, a safety study from Republic to, I believe, Aurora. And so they met with us. Initially, they started at Farm Road ninety-three. We asked them to extend it to MM Highway to include the MM intersection, which is now going to be closed in the future for the new overpass. It'll go on the new MM. They recommended the closure of ninety-three, Farm Road ninety-three, and I believe O'Neal was one, two of the closings. When that was presented before the community, that did not, they have to solicit public input, and so they wanted to provide that closure. So the city at that time didn't really take a position either way. They just kind of, here's our results, and they submitted that, and they submitted it for a grant to make improvements. So I do believe they got some funding to make some fencing around the school and maybe some grade crossings, but it was just a grant that the two organizations were working on. But the quiet zone was brought up at a later date was when that was discussed, is could we do a quiet zone? So we evaluated it and found the cost to be somewhere, it ballparks how much it's going to cost. But the one on Main Street, if you think about it, if you're going northbound, if you put a hundred foot of concrete in the middle, you're going to orbit block off that section. So there's some real logistics involved, but we promised the community that we would reevaluate the quiet zone. Well, I mean, I guess we discussed it at this council that we would take no action because we didn't have a funding position to do that unless we made those improvements. But the process is about two years at best if we start today.
Okay. I was just, I was just kind of curious as to what findings we had in the past before we spent another fifty thousand dollars. That's the same question.
Yeah. That was, we didn't spend the money on the first study. That was a MODOT expense. This is us to now pursue the, what it would take to meet the, how would we engineer it to give you preliminary design, how we would address it?
This is more preliminary design work rather than going and saying, what's it going to take?
Yeah. Instead of designing it and bringing a budget of a million dollars to improve it, it's like, here's what it's going to cost us to do it. Is that something that's the number one priority of the city? And that's going to be a decision on transportation. There's a lot of transportation needs. Is the quiet zone rank at the top of those issues?
Thank you.
Mr. Cameron, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Franklin.
When, when was the, what, do you remember approximately what day, what year it was that we looked at this quiet study last time and where you're referencing before?
So it was eighteen, it was twenty thou, it was twenty eighteen that initiated this study. I think the response was given in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. We asked Mr. Landis after that was done, our PIO at the time, to bring back a report prior to COVID, as I believe is when that was reported to us. So I'd say it was late nineteen that he brought a recommendation or what it was required. But we could also find for you the presentation that he provided to the council that night that outlined. So what we can do is send that out and make that of public record as well. We'll just post it on our website so people can see it, just to refresh everybody's mind what was actually discovered, that it was going to take. But it also included what that, that study found.
So that, that cost estimate of three hundred thousand to a million was in twenty eighteen?
Yeah, we ballparked just what we, what we learned of what was required to create it. I mean, you could throw up those plastic, you know, you see in some intersections, they'll put those little plastic things that I would probably just drive over, you know, or my, but anyway, they just look bad. So you don't want a concrete, plus widening the road. So if you look at the Heiko intersect, Heiko, Heinz intersection, gosh, that's like a long time ago, Heiko. Look at the Heinz intersection. You'd have to widen that section of road just to even meet the requirement to create the median in between it. So it's not just like, hey, put up a few, couple hundred thousand dollars, and they're going to stop blowing the horn. What you got to do at those crossings is, you know, I don't know if you ever, I'm not going to say I ever did it, but say when you went across, went around the track bar, that there has to be something that makes sure that you do not drive across the other side. It makes you drive into the other lane of traffic. So there has to be something that restricts you from going around that bar, that you're going to have to go over a hump, and that's what the separation requires.
Mr. Cameron, for the rest of the evening, you're not going to talk about your driving habits.
Well, I'm just saying I was sixteen once. I might have done that.
My recollection is COVID came and it put the brakes on all of this.
Well, I mean, yeah, because it's a cash position that, number one, we were telling, you know, we, we haven't paved, been able to pave or take care of a lot of the streets because we had dealt with the police department moving our transportation funds to that area. We're to the position like, okay, if we got to decide where to put our transportation dollars, is the noise addressing that, building those barriers in the best interest or paving mill or road was one, I mean, you're making those decisions. But until we know what the cost estimate is, we don't want to throw around big numbers and say you're just trying to, either it's a viable project or it's not. If it's quarter million dollars and we have that availability and it's something that's meaningful to the whole community, then we do something. But I think we did, I think we did a survey that also suggested, be it, it wasn't necessarily, you know, certified, but it was something that asked the community if that's something they wanted. I think that we'd heard that they wanted us to look into the quiet zone.
Have we looked at other towns that have issued this and its effectiveness? Because it sounds like you weren't too, like...
Well, we're the only one that I'm aware of that did not have a quiet zone. So we're one of the few that does not have one. So that doesn't mean we have to have one. But what the effectiveness of it is, it really depends on the operator, the engineer running the train. If they, you know, if it's someone that's new or different, then they might have to, I mean, it doesn't guarantee they're not going to blow the horn, but the idea is if you get a routine crew that you continue to work with, it'd get better. But it doesn't guarantee they're not going to do it. There's, there's been positive feedback for those that have them.
Mr. Franklin.
Mr. Mayor, what, how many, on average, how many citizens call and complain about the horn noise? I know we referenced a citizen survey. I looked back at our citizen survey for twenty twenty-one, and I was only able to find one reference from a citizen that complained about the, the train noise. And so kind of where I'm coming from is I'm glad Mr. Grooms had mentioned something about the fifty thousand dollars for the study. As I looked into this a little bit further and what the requirements are from the railroad, from MODOT and everyone else, it, it looks to me like if we decide to do this and have this study, we're going to have to do all five crossings at once in order to make the quiet zone fall into the standards of what they require. My concern is if we get into a million dollars plus, we're now sinking, sinking our transportation dollars into something that's simply a reduction in noise. I know when I first started here on council, noise from the train was number one complaint. That, that's not so much in the last couple of years. There's enough going on and enough other noises. I've gone around to all of these different spots and kind of looked them over, and it's like what you said, each one of them is very unique in what it takes, not only for the vehicle traffic, but also for the pedestrian traffic. As I look into this more, I keep coming up with questions and concerns. One of the biggest concerns that I've had that I didn't even take into consideration the last time we had discussed this is that the majority of this all goes right through a school district. And at first, I'm thinking, hey, it's quiet, they can concentrate more. But, you know, we live in an age of smartphones, noise cancelling headphones, earbuds. Kids aren't always paying attention. And so I'm, I'm more concerned now with the safety factor, just that most and the majority of this is going to be going through a school zone. And so I'm having a hard time justifying just the fifty thousand dollars for the study because I don't know that I could sell a million dollar project to make Republic a little bit quieter. And so I'm just kind of curious of what brought this back to council. It's just after COVID, we're picking up, we're left off. That's kind of...
I, I can, those are points well taken. I, I think that it comes down to, because it was left, evaluated, it really never got brought up as like, now are you going to bring this back up? And I'm like, you know what? It's at least willing to bring back up to the council for consideration whether to take this step. So really, you're at the threshold that why we talked about what it would cost to do it is understanding, yeah, you could be spending fifty thousand dollars and have nothing in return. So that's a decision, a decision that this council will need to make. But for us, we're willing to align with the other priorities that we've communicated to the community that we have to take care of first when it comes to the transportation, because it would have to come out of the transportation budget. And just for reference, like, like Andrew said in the ballot measure, there's four hundred and eighty-four lane miles of, of road in the city that basically had not been touched for the last five, I mean, at least five to seven, ten years. So there's a long list of other things that you're going to be, we're going to be presenting before you. The Heinz or the Lynn and Heinz intersection, putting, doing improvements at that intersection has got to improve. There's the Heinz and ZZ intersection that has to, you know, that we're working on. So there's other places, Illinois Street. I can go, again, if I ask everybody in the room to raise their hand and tell me what street it would be, they'd give me a street. But I think that's, it's duly noted, but what we have to do is at least say, is this something that you're interested in pursuing any further? Because this council asked us to review the quiet zone. This was the next step after the ballot measure to put it back in front of this council. So great questions and great dialogue. And I would ask, I mean, if you want to research it more before you make the decision on fifty thousand, you know, do you have the right to table this or make a motion to table? Because you have that option. I don't want anyone to feel like there's, there's pressure to it, and we can answer more questions and provide, and give time for more feedback for you to ask those in your, you know, in your ward, whether that's something that they would like to consider. That'd be my recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron.
That's a lot of wisdom right there.
I have one last question.
Please, Mr. Grooms.
Mr. Cameron, you've referenced the ballot measure at least two, if not three times. Was the language of the ballot measure did it in any way refer to this study or to like the quiet zones at all?
No. So, great question. So we, the ballot measure was, is for public safety. Outlined in our literature was the explanation that six hundred thousand dollars a year was moved from motor fuel sales tax to the, the police department to fund, the police department, which was the fund that funded the, the street department. So the motor, what the new public safety tax does is it meets the financial need of that six hundred thousand, that they are no longer taking it out of the street department budget. So it moves six hundred thousand back to the street department budget, and they're funded out of the public safety sales tax. We, we did not state that we were going to use, that we were going to fix every single problem, but it provides a, a financial position for the street department that was not otherwise there every year. So the discussion has been, well, now that that's done and you have the ability to make an improvement to the street, which was discussed in the quiet zone discussion, like, why don't you just go create a quiet zone? There are street improvements that have to be made to do that, and we do not have a cash position to deal with streets. So I do believe there were some that believed that passage of that would help address the quiet zone issue. But that was not, that was nothing of our overall strategy or discussion in our education pieces. But we did discuss that's something we would reevaluate if and when the ballot, the ballot measure did pass.
Mr. Dykman.
Question, Mr. Cameron, you, I believe you said that to be able to go forward with it, that there had to be an engineering study. Is that correct?
Well, number one is we're not going to apply engineering resources on our staff to design what, you know, we don't, I mean, my staff don't work with the railroad's engineering staff every day. So you, you solicit an engineer that would work with the railroad, that would create the design, that would meet the specifications, work, work with the railroad to come up with plans and specs that would meet that. Then you would hire a contractor to do it. So basically, finding someone that understands railroad requirements, design requirements, that provide us a realistic cost estimate. And it's worth noting that probably at the time when we actually started the first one, the cost of construction has gone up. So these were just estimates if we had, I believe staff even pulled together the, if we had to pour, pour a concrete column down the middle of the road, how far does, I think it's like a hundred feet. So again, I'm not going to start talking engineering, but that's, yeah, what, the next step was to secure an engineering firm to design it. Because someone like, oh, it's just simple, put something down the middle of the road. Well, it has to be, we have to submit that plan to the railroad. And then, like, like I said, it could be two years before that plan is even approved. And again, even if we make those improvements, like Mr. Nelson will tell you, that that does not necessarily mean that there will not be a horn blown. So just, just full, full transparency, I appreciate the comment. Before you spend fifty thousand, you understand there's potential this project never goes because if you don't make a budget allocation to do the improvements, even if you do, there's no guarantee that it means they won't. I know it sounds like, then why would we do it? Because it was brought up at this council, and we're not allowed the luxury just to discredit what you say. So we have to bring that back to you for consideration. So if you'd like to table it for more questioners, discussion, we can do that.
Mr. Brickner, is there a time limit that we have to get back to this engineering firm to say yes or no?
No, because we haven't executed an agreement with them yet. So waiting until the next council meeting would be fine.
Hearing that and hearing the discussion, I would entertain a motion to table this until the March fifteenth city council meeting so we could do a little bit more research.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Franklin, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. This is, resolution twenty-two dash R dash eleven is tabled to March fifteenth city council meeting. Moving on to item number eleven on our agenda, this is twenty-two dash R dash twelve, a resolution of the city council authorizing the police department to apply for two reimbursable twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Missouri Highway Safety Program Traffic Safety Grants. Lieutenant Burks.
The police department was requesting authorization to, excuse me, apply, just apply for two reimbursable Missouri Safety Highway Program grants. And these are the same ones that we're currently working on, ones that we have applied for at least fifteen, sixteen years in the past, been approved for them. There are two separate grants. One is for hazardous motor vehicles. One is for DWI. It does still have, I cover this usually every year. It still says the sobriety checkpoint language in there. We still can't use them for sobriety checkpoints. They just have us leave it in there in case the legislation changes when we can. We will be requesting eight thousand dollars in the H and V and ten thousand dollars in the DWI.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council? Mr. Dykman.
Lieutenant, is there, I don't remember when we did the last one. Is there a matching that we have to do?
There's no matching. What, what this is, is the officers will come in and work. They're paid overtime for it, and then we send that in and they reimburse us on it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, just out of curiosity, I know we've applied for this grant several times and received it in the past. Do we use that full amount of the grant every year?
So, good question. The last few years, obviously, we've been, we've been understaffed not only with where we should be, but also just keeping people, you know, I mean, this time last year, we were six or seven people short. So the, the answer to that is, no, we haven't. We are on track to use it all this year that we, that we got. So the, the grants actually end September thirtieth and they start October first. So we've been working on the current one since October first, and, and we're on track to use it all this, this year. Because now we're fully staffed, and in April, we'll be adding more staff.
Sure. Thank you. Any other questions? As this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries seven to zero. Moving on to item number twelve, this is twenty-two dash R dash thirteen, a resolution of the city council authorizing the Parks and Recreation Director to enter into a contract with SAP Design Architects Associates for providing architectural services on parks and recreation-related projects. Good evening, Mr. Keeling.
Good evening. As you may recall, as part of the ARPA fund received in two thousand twenty-one, I think it happened in two thousand twenty-one, we're happy, half of it again in two thousand point two, city council approved three hundred thousand dollars of that money for the improvements to JR Martin Park. That was going to include a boulevard or the loop, as we're going to call it. This scope of services included in this architectural contract marks the start of that project. Very excited to get that going. We've also included conceptual designs and renderings for three other possible future park projects, that being the development of the recently purchased one hundred and thirty-six acre park out by the City Water Tower along James River, rack expansion, expansion of the Aquatic Center to possibly include the Lazy River and possible improvements to Brookline Park. Those conceptuals and renderings are being done ahead of what we hope to be our ballot initiatives in August. We are going to come back to council in April to, to ask you to place those ballot initiatives on the ballot in August. We also are going to have a city council workshop on April the fifth at five thirty to show you all the renderings as a result of this project. So we are recommending approval.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from council?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Keeling, how many of these projects are kind of reliant on the passage of that tax renewal?
Certainly. Great question. So the ARPA funds will allow us for phase one funding of the improvements to JR Martin Park, whether that we ultimately decide on Boulevard or the Loop. The other three are contingent upon the successful renewal of our sales, the capital improvements for the sales tax in, in August. We have two that are going to come. Once again, that's at the pleasure of the council. We're going to place those on the ballot in August. One of the quarters is dedicated exclusively to the operations of the Parks and Recreation Department. That's kind of how we turn the lights on and operate. The other quarter is dedicated for capital improvement projects. In the past, we, we used that quarter for the construction of the Aquatic Center, construction of the AMP, Veterans Memorial, things of that nature.
Any other questions? I'm letting Mr. Franklin look at his notes.
No, I, I don't necessarily have any more questions. I'm just kind of, out of four different items, we've got three that are kind of, and, and I get it, I'm not trying to ask an impossible question here. I know, of course, we need something to look at to have that consideration. I'm just kind of worried at a hundred twenty-seven thousand, a hundred and thirty, was that the maximum?
Yeah, one twenty-seven is correct.
One twenty-seven was the maximum. That'll cover our obligations to JR Martin Park.
I think I am understanding your question. So a breakdown of those expenses are roughly, if I recall from memory, about sixty-five thousand dollars for the JR Martin Park project. The other remaining sixty thousand was to go for the conceptual design and renderings for the other park projects. I will say this, and we specifically asked the architect, is there any way, even if the, even if they, we should go to ballot and it fail, or you guys all coincide not to go to ballot, we're not taking a step forward that we shouldn't take. We need this in our master planning. We also need it in conceptual designs if it ever goes down the road further. So we wouldn't be by any means overstepping our bounds and doing something that we wouldn't, shouldn't be doing anyway if we decided to do these projects later down the road. And for our master, master planning purposes alone, that would be terrific, so.
And that's, that's what I'm looking at too, is, is that master plan. I'm, I'm not trying to, to pick anything apart or make anything reliant that, you know, on that tax, but just to, for the, the benefit of knowing what exactly the possibilities of some of these projects would be is helpful. But no, I understand with the general plan and knowing what's going to go on and having a plan to present necessary.
One very important part of this whole thing we're going to go through with the architects is for them to actually kind of be able to tell us what we can conceivably do and afford at this time, if we should go forward with the election. That's going to be a pivotal part because what we want to do is come back in April and be very educated on what we are going to tell you guys and the voter. If we're going to do this, this is what we're going to be able to do and to what extent. So obviously, as you can imagine, construction prices right now aren't doing us a favor. We had a preliminary estimate on what a lazy river could cost at the Aquatic Center was substantially more than we wanted, but that's what we're going through right now, trying to figure those things out, so.
And so, so this will give us different plans that we can present as options for expansion, even if we don't have all of the funding that we want. We still have some funding for...
We won't have all the funding that we want, I can assure you. I wish we could, trust me, so.
Sure. No, I appreciate your answers.
Mr. Grooms.
Then I assume that these, these, the renderings of the, the three projects, let's say they're contingent upon the ballot measure, upon the, upon the funding, these are going to, these are renderings that are going to be used to...